Reconvene, thank you very much for the request from Mr. Coppers. I did forget one thing, it's sort of anti-climax at this point, but I do have a pen for Mr. Coppers. This is from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, Mr. Bell. This is their official button, and I did ask Mr. Coppers prior to this if he had one of these buttons, and he said he did not. So, Commissioner Coppers.
I do now. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
A little anti-climax, if you have a role.
That's all right.
But that's your...
We could use a little anti-climax at this point.
We have item number four is the agreement with D-Net regarding installation of cameras and additional bandwidth, and I think you have better information, it's been reviewed by Andy Muncy, he's recommended that for approval. Mr. County Manager, do you have anything to add?
County Attorney has looked at it, he has one slight adjustment to that, just to summarize this for everybody to know what we're talking about. The D-Net has offered to give us additional bandwidth at the Business Development Center in exchange for allowing them to place a webcam on top of courthouse to view the downtown Franklin, which will also be good about promoting our area for economic development. So, that's worth, the extra bandwidth is worth more than rental agreement that we get for allowing the camera to be up there, and so Andy's looked at it, he thinks it's a good thing, and we got a little agreement that they drafted, had Chester look at it, and I think it's a one-year at a time agreement, and Chester has one little change he wanted to make to it, I think we all consider adopting it.
Just very, very moderate, under paragraph two, A1, just add five words to the very end, as specified by Macon County, I wanted the budget to clear that any attachment to the building is done in a direction of Macon County.
Install a camera now. County Commissioners, five West Main Street?
Pretty much.
The good news about that, no matter where you are in the world, if you want to see what it looks like on that now, Franklin, you're...
I think it'd be a...
I would've got it, you know, you can do that for...
Did you ever say that?
Please.
That's great. That makes a great idea. Based on Chris Muncy and County Manager, and our attorney's recommendation to change an order, motion being ordered to approve that.
So moved.
So, the motion by Chris Coppers, second by Tate, in discussion.
Mr. Chairman, before you vote, just real quick, we need to give a shout out to Andy Muncy.
Yes, sir.
For his accomplishment, his graduation from, who said, I'm just getting the certificate, but, and his IT that he just graduated from, if you read the email, you saw that he's one of few in the state to accomplish this, and so it's another example, as the Commission talked about, his own employees stepping up, and he certainly gets more money for this than he actually can. So, he done this on his own time, it's been a very difficult school, that shows the dedication of people like Andy Muncy, we appreciate it.
He's a brilliant guy, thank you for that. The item number five is the realignment of the school... Oh, I'm sorry, any other discussion? I stand up. All favor the motion, Senator Coppers saying aye. Aye. opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Thank you very much. The next item is the realignment of Macon County Schools' capital outlay budget. As you know, the school board does set their capital outlay budget, we approve our budget to them based on what they have prioritized, if there's a change in that just management or come wrong, the Board of County Commissioners has to reapprove that, since they are an elected board, and that's their call, I would recommend approving this. As a member of the liaison committee, would you concur?
I do. Just to clarify, for clarification, the school board, this is only the capital outlay portion of the school board budget, and the school board budget on capital outlay is broken into three categories for that, and they're actually just realigning some of the priorities in there that came up after the boys were approved. Bottom line is, the county's not having any more money but allowing them to adjust where they need to adjust.
Correct, or don't you merely just move in some outline of the rate? That is correct. And members of the media, we'd be glad to give you copies of this right now.
Mr. Bell, anything you'd like to speak to on that adjustment?
Ms. Bell, please, I would like to make that...
Yes, I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the capital outlay adjustments that the school board is bringing in.
Good motion, my friend, we have second, second by Commissioner Haver, in discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. We have been discussing for some time the need for some renovations, Mr. Tate, at the Highlands School. We've had funds made available to us through QZAB, and I want to steal his time, Mr. Manager, if you would address that, please, sir.
There's some renovations that need to be made, and Mr. Bell is quite commensurate with, probably more than most others, with the exception of maybe Commissioner Tate. But, the estimate was, it's going to take about a million and a half dollars to do the renovations that are necessary up here on the Highlands School. County's done some work on it before, and this doesn't take entirely where it really needs to be, but it helps a great deal for that renovation up there. The QZAB qualifies its own academy bonds, as you all know, we use them for East Franklin, we use them for the Nata Hill project, and we're proposing to use them for this project as well. The good news on the QZAB right now is that we can borrow the money, it's been approved by the State Department of Public Instruction and recommended for approval, and it has to still be approved by local government commission. But the good news about the QZAB now is, one of the pieces of good news is that with the reimbursement for the buyout on the rate, the interest rate on the million and a half will be zero.
Zero percent.
Won't have to pay any interest on that, so, and then we also have a local commitment from the Highlands Country Club that they will actually commit up to $150,000 over a ten-year period to help provide a local, a non-governmental max from the community for that project, so we appreciate them doing that. The other good news is that since we are retiring the debt at Highlands on the gym, we'll retire in June, that we can accommodate this debt without any additional increases in tax rates or revenues to do that. So, there are a lot of reasons that, there are two or three things we have to do. One of them is we have to have the architect go ahead and do the design work and get that finished, and there's an item on your agenda to approve that for Watson, Mike Watson, who's done our schoolwork. The other thing we have to do is go ahead and go out the biz on the specifications that he'll put together, and then the next thing is to get on these gems and have approval by local government commission in Raleigh before we can actually issue the debt. All this being said, if you all approve for us to go forward tonight, it'll probably be the first meeting of the LGC in February before we get final approval to issue the debt. But, that's a summary, County Attorney and the County Financial Director will have additional comments, Mr. Chairman.
Was there a one we were going to see?
Yeah, we already talked about one of those.
And they've agreed, and just to summarize what Jack said, what he's asking us to do tonight is just to approve, then to go ahead and with process. We're not actually letting bids, we're not actually spending the money.
Well, we actually, what we're asking you to do is give us authorization to go ahead and, if you approve our architectural agreement waiver for Bowers, Ellison, Watson, then we'll actually have to contract with them to go ahead and do the design work, put the specifications together, go out to bid, and then get the bids in. We have to have bids in hand before LGC will approve the loan.
Do you, I don't see the bid number. Do I have that number? We have Watson's number?
We don't have that yet. We had anticipated having a proposed contract, but at this particular stage, we provide for the county to be required to put, give notice, if you will, of need for architectural or engineering services or surveying services. That very same statute also says that the county has the ability through its commission to waive that requirement within its discretion in certain circumstances. In speaking with Jack, he and I enumerated a number of reasons why Jack felt it was important to utilize Bowers, Ellison, Watson for this project. Those are set forth in this proposed resolution that I've distributed to you, and basically what this does is, it basically says that we're going to exempt the county from the notice requirements, and we're going to go straight to negotiating something with Bowers, Ellison, Watson. He did send an email out earlier this weekend, we actually anticipated getting a proposal, but I didn't get it, I don't know whether you did or not.
I don't have, I don't have a copy with me, and I can't recall any specifics on there, but we would expect that the percentage of cost on this, not to mean any more of the percentage of cost on the renovation of that public and naval school.
And I suspect...
And the total project...
Not exactly, one, one...
I suspect it would be something in all likelihood available for your consideration that you'd be sent to...
So, Chester, you looking for a motion on the resolution?
Yes.
For the exemption of operating engineering services?
What I'd like, before you make that motion, is before we do that, I'd like to see if the board would authorize us to proceed with the necessary requirements to get this project done, and the first thing that would be, need to be done after that is authorize the approval, or approve the waiver, so we can negotiate with the architect in order to develop this plan to specifications.
And each one of you can address this too, I know, for disclosure here, I had a private conversation with Jack when this came up. We're not the environment, I don't think, to raise taxes or try to come up with any revenue, so I shared with Jack that I would be reluctant to vote for this if we could not come up with some type of funding source from existing funds. So, going through this process, and I was involved on school board in the financing of the Highlands Gym, which is a little over $2.1 billion, I believe, am I right about that?
I won't remember exactly what it's over, $2 billion.
Yeah, a little over $2 billion. The debt service on that, to reiterate what Jack said a moment ago, the debt service on that is over in June.
This comes June.
So, and my question to Jack, and of course he responded back, is would that be sufficient or more than sufficient to amortize this debt? And it would be, because, one, it's a smaller amount of money, and, two, it's 0% interest. So, with that said, I'm in full support of this, because we can use existing money, does not require any type of tax increase, and does not require us increasing our budget, does it require us increasing our budget at all to accomplish this?
I would echo that, I think that's exactly the right approach, I think the money is there, the timing works, especially now that we've got some lots to do it in this fiscal year.
And Jack, based on, based on those conversations, and some of you guys may have had those privately too, this is the first time we've discussed it in this kind of forum, that's what I'm saying here, Jack asked for a delay in...
Extension, yeah.
Extension, sorry, to put that off a little bit into 2013, to allow us to retire the debt for that Highlands project, and we may have the ability to move that payment from the Highlands Gym to this project, and it would actually be, I don't know, Lori, the exact number, it would be a smaller payment, so it would have a positive cash flow.
We're still going to roll some of that off.
Yeah, we'll have it, we'll have it.
And just to remind you, this is one project, the only thing you've ever changed, Mr. Manager, that when we did the residential renovations up at our gym, when we did the soccer field, we did the bathrooms, we did that part, this project at that time was not ready to go, not until they got shuffled back, it just wasn't ready to go. So, I think that it's ready to go now, and it's, so whatever motion you need, probably Coppers makes.
I'd like to, before we do that, I'd like to defer to Commissioner Tate, being our representative from up there, to address this, the need, and if you agree, if you're supportive, I'd like to hear that.
Yeah, I'm obviously definitely in support of it, and I think it's definitely needed. I'm going to do two things, one is, I would like to give the Highlands Country Club a plug for stepping up at the plate for the Highlands community and offering $150,000 in kind and cash donations to the Highlands School.
Did we explain the factors necessary to get this?
You know, that's true, sir.
You're going to have to have, you're going to have some non-governmental investment in order to support the QZAB, 10%.
Very, very favorable to the Highlands Country Club. Second thing, I'm just going to run through the few items, and Terry, please correct me if I missed something, but the items that I have on the list that we corrected are, this is there when I was in kindergarten at the Highlands School. Replace the 1970 boiler, and all piping will be changed to copper piping.
You need to replace that off.
That's been a heck of a war. Bite from the same company.
Still works. It's due. I appreciate Commissioner Haver coming up on Monday to walk me through, looking at some of these things. We're going to put spray insulation on all areas above the ceiling and around all the new piping, which rose in the 1980s, I think they actually worked school on it. We're going to put a new drop ceilings to replace the two-by-four tiles with a two-by-two bridge, which are now, will be fire rated. We're going to put in new TA, high-efficiency lighting. We're going to replace the window air-conditioning units and the radiator heat units, where they threw the wallboard units, V-A-R-D, this is what's being used now in all our new construction. New floor tile and the elementary wing ramblers. I can remember as a, like, that was a second grader, we were having naptime, and somebody rolled over, smacked the radiator unit, some size of one. Thought that was my time to do that, too, so I reached there and smacked it, and I got a cough, and said, and that was back in the day when you could get your paddles, that was my first.
Looked at you, you know, you're the Commissioner.
I'd be the one to help you release.
Tell the young guys on the board, they actually remember me.
And you could also dump, you could also dump the pencil raters in there, you know, where you shave it. I've heard that, I don't know.
Of course not.
So, with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve Jack's decision.
Okay, I guess what we're asking, yeah, I like your... I guess the motion would be to authorize the County Attorney and Chairman to proceed with the necessary requirements to have the project ready for final approval by the local government commission.
We have a second.
Most...
We have motion, and a second, as far as discussion, just clarification, this is not a vote to spend the money, this is a vote to proceed with the process, that will still have to be, there's another stamp that we will have to approve expansion of money, Mr. Bell. Just clarification on what this is. Any, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of motion, Senator Coppers saying aye. Aye. Opposed, that motion passes, unanimous. Mr. Tate, thank you for your, for your work, Commissioner Tate's been very active with this, and you're appreciated, we're proud of you, thank you, sir. The next item, a little background that Jack went into, and Lori, some time back, actually right after we were corrected for our, we decided to do the 1.5 million deal with BBNT, and they offered us a, they wanted to be a very attractive interest rate. So, we went back to BBNT and asked them to revisit a couple of the loans that they had with us, that we had to them, pardon me, and they agreed to, at Lori's insistence, they agreed to lower those interest rates, and saved us, I recall, about $250,000 in interest, and those were fairly small loans, but we renegotiated those, and we were able to convince our lawyer, was able to convince BBNT to lower those rates, and saved us quite a bit of money. As part of that, brought that up, that perhaps we should visit our larger debt that the county had, has had for a while, and Lori has been working on that. So, Lori, let me defer to you.
Mr. Chairman, before we get into that, can we go ahead and finish up with the QZAB architectural labor?
Oh, I'm sorry, you need to vote on that.
We need, we need authorization.
We need approval.
That was part of, okay, let's get a dish. Motion, and second, to approve the architectural agreement.
The resolution.
Resolutions, sir. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, Senator Coppers saying aye. Aye. Opposed, that motion passes, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, sir. So, with that thought of refinancing and saving money in mind, Lori, who agreed with Commissioner Coppers, does an outstanding job, Lori, we plan on you retiring from Macon County, but not yet. No, no, I mean, work the rest of your career here. So, let me defer to you, give a little background, and then I think you have Chris, the first try on here, if you have a good hand.
Okay. Like you said, with the interest rates being as attractive as they are, I talked with BBNT on two smaller loans, we saved about $250,000 by refunding those a couple months ago. I had also had conversations, you know, with our, our larger debt with them, which is our, 2008, I believe, 2008, it was, yeah, we had an interest rate of 4.59% for 20 years, and that was the five-six school in East Franklin addition. So, the current principal outstanding, 16 million, but by the time, if you guys give us authorization, by the time we get to the bond market, it'd be down to 15.5 million, because we have another thing to do in January. But anyway, I had to also talk with BBNT about that loan, but as Chris can explain better than I can, there's an opportunity out there to go out to the bond market and issue limited obligation bonds, which could actually save the county even more money. So, I was kind of stopped there and introduced Chris Alexander with First Try and Advisors, unless Jack has something he would like to interject before Chris gets over.
When people start talking about saving, saving money, then that sort of gets our attention, I know the work is out there, and they begin to save taxpayers as much as we can in terms of refinancing loans for the little obligations, that there's an excellent opportunity for the county to save a great deal of money, we won't know exactly how much that is, the little bonds are actually sold, but I think Chris can give you more details on that than I can.
Chris, welcome.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hall, Mr. Horton, members of the board, I should appreciate your time tonight. Lori asked me to put together a very concise and very small part of kind of what led up to this. I sent Lori over some information of the day, and kind of gave her a little bit of forewarning. I would tell everybody how we got to this point, and what the market is currently, so you better understand what's happened getting to this point, and how we arrived here. In the spring of 2008, Macon County issued a RFP for underwriting a private placement issue for school financing improvements, this was for the five-six school as well as the other project as well. At that time, many of the banks were offering, retail services in the state were offering fixed-rate long-term loans in the form of private placement with the banks. These loans are issued under North Carolina General Statute 160 slash A, past 20, allowing for a single lender to be offering a loan payable directly to a bank. It wasn't until early 2008 that 20-year loans were available at all in North Carolina, typically it was a 15-year loan. The issue that we had at that point in time was that, as many of you are well aware, especially Mr. Tate, obviously, is that when you go out and you issue a debt for a school, and you build a school, and you want to be able to amortize it over a similar period as the high you depreciate it. The issue is with many buildings is that you can go ahead and depreciate that over 50 years. If you only amortize it over 15 years, you're not currently spreading out that cost over the correct amount of time for a lot of those transactions. Anyway, in 2008, many of the lenders in the state of North Carolina began lending for 20-year debt at that point in time, and that was on a tax-exempt BQ and also non-bank qualified basis. A county would become a non-bank qualified entity if you issued more than $10 million in a current calendar year. During that period of time, the county had issued $20 million for this project, and so therefore it was a non-bank qualified transaction. Non-bank qualified transactions have to come with a slightly higher spread to the market as does a BQ, because there are certain benefits to the banks' hold in-state debt that is bank qualified. So, for that reason, we had quite a few deals that were coming to the market, obviously, Lori, you mentioned that you guys got a very attractive rate at that point in time, at 4.59%. I know this because I worked on the deal. I was working with BBNT Government Finance at that point in time, I have about, going on 13 years of experience in the tax-exempt municipal debt market. As a result, North Carolina issuers, obviously, were opting for a longer duration, which many of these felt would never be refunded. Obviously, no one really expected the break recession to hit in late 2008, and many of the banks who were offering 20-year financing sets pulled back. Right now, the only opportunities for non-bank qualified transactions extend only to 12 to 13 years, and so at that point, it is very difficult for the county to go out to a different lender and ask for a non-bank qualified loan, because the county still has its 15.5 million dollars.
Ask a question right there.
Sure.
This debt, the 4.59 for the five-six East Franklin, 16 million, what's the term, is that 20-year term?
Okay, there's 20-year term.
So, we're, we're...
You're currently at 16 and a half years.
Okay.
Or 16 years as of January.
16 years left.
Yes, right.
Okay, thank you.
And, and there's no banks that are currently in the state of North Carolina that are operating and actually offering loans, that are offering any type of non-bank qualified loans past 12 to 13 years. 13 years for some lenders, 12 years for other lenders, but the issue is, is that the only way you'd be able to get a lower interest rate would actually be able to go back to BBNT directly and say, will you modify the rate on this loan? And the bank has the opportunity to say, yes, or no. In this case, BBNT said, yes. I don't know the exact rate, but I think you said it was a 350-ish?
Somewhere around that.
Obviously, with, with the market the way it is, and I actually brought my little sheet here, this was a printout from, actually, this morning, 7:47, the market closed today, three basis points over in 2019, 2020, and one basis point over in 2021 through 2023, over the all-time low, ever. And so, for that reason, and also, just to give you a bit of an idea...
The bond market.
The bond market, municipal bond market, tax-exempt bond market, just to give you an idea, last Thursday, there were T-bill auctions, 90-day T-bill auction, nine basis points, and 181-day, 13 and a half basis points, near all-time lows as well. So, getting back to what we're talking about here, obviously, the county is looking for opportunities to save some money, and we've been talking with Lori, I think, since soon after she arrived here last year, made a couple of this out, and talked with Mr. Horton as well. First Try out, obviously, comes in and won back as financial advisor on this transaction, and as such, we've looked at the different options. There was a good opportunity with BBNT to refinance that loan, however, there's currently 30 to 35 basis points of additional savings by going to the public bond market. The timing, obviously, is quite a bit different. If you were to go back and you were simply ask BBNT for a rate modification, they could say, done, we'll get it taken care of, send you the paperwork, and we'll get it taken care of through the LGC. To go to the limited obligation bond route, it would require a little more time. We'd be looking at going to the LGC for approval in the month of February. It would also require board action on December 11th, I believe, January the 8th, if that's when you guys are meeting next. It'll also require a public hearing to be held, and 10 days notice given prior to that public hearing. That public hearing will have to take place on the 8th of January. And depending, just for a forenote, depending on when your current papers run, we want to ensure that's in there well in advance, so we would suggest that that runs sometime the week of, the 22nd of December. In many cases, many of our clients only get one shot at proverbial apple. Obviously, during, current market is not behaving like any other we've seen in history. The health of the local economy, and natural and federal economy, is obviously judged in varying degrees of desert funding right now. Internationally, we're having quite a bit of issues with many countries having significant issues. Germany, as a perfect example, issued five-year bonds at 0.0%. In other words, they said, in five years, we want you to give me back the same dollars I'm giving you today. That's how little people are living in, in the economies overseas. Reserve Bank has come out and issued statements regarding their attempt to keep long-term and short-term rates very low, at least through 2013. Given the year that's where they currently can sell over the rate modification, the additional time and effort it's going to take for limited obligation bonds to come to market, we feel it's extremely beneficial to the county. The process in which the county will issue limited obligation bonds will require the use of bond counsel and underwriter, because this will come as a negotiated deal, underaged counsel, financial advisor, local government commission, rating agencies, and also a trustee. The working group, obviously, is yet to be set, but I believe that some conversations have been had by you and Parker Poe, as bond counsel, and they will be bringing the information to you as soon as, probably, the first week of December, in order to include in your bond package for, your board package for the 11th of December. The refunding as presented, extract bonds to be issued at a premium, meaning pure bonds would need to be sold in a... would need to be sold in order to, um, escrow the outstanding refunding bonds. Based on the current market, we would expect, uh, approximately 14.34 million dollars in bonds to be issued to refund the county's outstanding obligation after January, uh, after the January payment of 15.5 million dollars. Statements associated with the refunding have varied over the course of the last nine months. However, we are expecting, uh, those statements to exceed several percent of the refunded principle. The LGC likes to see you move forward with at least two and a half percent. Uh, and to, to be able to reduce your annual debt service by more than 75,000 dollars per year, uh, we estimate the yield associated with the refunding bonds will be reduced to an interest cost from 4.59% to less than 3.35%. Now, as I mentioned, obviously, we're at near all-time lows, and I would be remiss if I came here and said, "This is what you guys are going to get." I can't tell you that because I don't have the first of all. Uh, the issue is, is that we try to set the standards for moving forward with refunding at a very conservative, uh, level. And for that, uh, obviously, the statements right now and some of the things that Lori and I'm sure Jack have seen have been quite a bit better than those numbers that I've recently given. Uh, but it's, it's fair to understand with the fact, um, with the bond market the way it is currently, that we expect you to have a lot more savings than, than 7% and something like that dollars per year. And this have about 15, 15 and a half years left on it, so give me a savings of probably excess of, uh, net present value, 875,000.
So to reiterate, essentially, we'll be dropping our effective interest rate from 4.59%. For discussion purposes, 3.35.
And less, less than 3.35%.
And for a total savings of over 800,000 dollars.
Over 800,000 dollars. No. I always go in and I talk to board, uh, members and, um, it's our, our best habit of, of going and doing things is to underpromise and overdeliver. I'd be willing to tell you where, uh, the current bond market savings rates are, as long as you do not set your hopes on that level.
Where are they?
Um, currently, you're just shy of 2 million dollars.
In savings?
In savings.
So everything else, everything else remain constant? And this happens after February?
Correct.
Then we can expect to save 2 million dollars?
If, if everything remained constant throughout that period of time and current market conditions do not change, um, that's correct.
So it's conservative, the conservative number you gave us of 800,000 says, "If a couple of things go wrong, you'll still probably..." That's the more probable number.
I'm saying...
Unless anything changes.
If, uh, if the bond market moves by 30 basis points, to that point in time, we will still get 800,000 dollars.
That's, that's what, what was the basis of the 800,000?
So we're, we're reasonably looking at a savings of 800,000 to 2 million dollars.
Right. And currently, I don't know if you have a read, Lori, but I believe that the current TIC associated with the refunding is, uh, 2.7?
2.7.
2.4?
2.47.
2.47%.
You had the same as...
And the number I gave you was 3.35.
So, so 2.47 is current assumptions, and sort of 1.35 is kind of, you don't want us to get our hopes up, but this, this we can pretty well count.
That's right.
You don't see, it's, it'll probably land somewhere in the middle, right? If you look, we got, I just went to a bank, we can broadcast here and that, and we talked about, and it's, and it's going like this.
To, to be completely honest with you, I would say 60 to 70% of it will rely on what happens with the outcome of the federal, uh, debt system. That's essentially what it is. Uh, since the election ended, I believe the interest rate has down to a tune of 20, 25 basis points.
What you're speculating?
But even if you split, if you split, split in the middle ladder, and say 3%, you're still, you're still looking at 1.4 million dollars.
Sure, and, and, and what I'm saying is, you, to the best of your knowledge, and you, you don't have a pistol bar, you don't expect it to be any worse than the 30-point shift you talked about. That'll be, could be worse, obviously, but, but you're looking at the probabilities, that's probably as bad a situation as you could imagine at this point in time.
I would expect probably a 30 to 50 basis point shift. You currently have, to get to that 3.35%,
Right.
You have any basis point difference.
Oh, okay.
I got you.
It's just 2...
You always have the option, though.
I'm slow, but I got it.
On the bond market, and then it goes all the way out.
Yeah, you're at 2.47.
You still have the option. We still have the option of not going anywhere.
That's correct.
Leave the loan.
Leave the loan.
That's right.
That's true.
Yeah, explain that to Lori.
And so...
This is starting to sound like no lose to me, that always is.
You're out a little bit, honey.
You're out some money because...
Because they gotta get, they gotta pay them, them, but we're not...
You're going to pay the firm.
Actually, Lori just twisted my arm.
Yeah.
We are paid, uh, 100%...
As we pay her too.
We are paid 100% contention on a successful close. Uh, and so all the work that we put in, in assessing the county with, uh, going back to the rating agencies, and we pride ourselves on working with the counties to fully understand what's going on, uh, not only with the county, but also with board, uh, with all of the department heads that are going on, and, and work with rating agencies and have them fully understand what's going on with the county in order to provide the best rating back possible to the county. Uh, I just had a conference call earlier today with Fitch regarding another, another county, and, uh, we got them an upgrade. Not to say that that's going to happen, but obviously, a great deal of things have changed since you guys last came to market in 2004. We have looked at your 2004 debt, however, when the 2004 debt was issued, you was issued a non-callable debt. Your fee is based on the total amount of the debt. Our fee, uh, it has two different parts, and we have a fixed rate associated with any type of transaction. I don't care if you come to us for a $5 million transaction or a $50 million transaction. We've got a set amount that's based on the same amount of work we do on every single transaction. And then we also have a variable rate component that's associated with that, and that's based on how much you issue. Currently, we're expecting bonds to come to market at a premium, which means you will issue less money. You issue less money, you pay a loss. And that's just currently based on, on what the market's going through.
So if we close this loan today, how much will we be able to pay?
30, 31,000 change?
Or if you got 1.5?
That's based on 1.5.
Before the payment?
14.34.
4.34 million.
Oh, I...
That's right. And, and all payments, all, all payments associated with coming to market on the debt are actually paid out of the cost of issuance. The county would be out of no money if you guys move forward with a refunding. You don't pay anything out of pocket. Everything gets financed into the loan under the 2% rule, and you cannot issue 2% in cost of issuance in your deal. It's a 1%. We're currently estimating your cost of issuance.
No, I don't.
You're currently estimating your cost of issuance to be between 150 and 160,000 dollars, uh, not including underwriting.
Hey, Chris, now, help, they, it's like we moved forward and the market is terrible in March, and they say, "We don't want to do it." We still owe the rating agencies, and there's the LGC application thing back there.
The LGC application, you will have to go in, uh, because this is refunding debt. The QZAB is a little different. You're going to have to put in, uh, a fee from the LGC on that transaction as well that will have to go in a full 30 days in advance, that has to go in with the application. Because this is refunding debt, this can go in only 15 days in advance. We never try to take it out of the last day, so we'll probably end up sending it 20 to 25 days in advance. The fee is more by coming to market with a limited obligation bond as opposed to a 160-20 price replacement. 160-20 price replacement is 12, uh, 1,250 dollars. A limited obligation bond for the state, you know, let's say, is 12,500, ten times as much come to market with limited obligation. Obviously, the difference right now is to the tune of about 50 basis points better for the county to come to market with a limited obligation bond than to issue a rate modification, if you will, to BBNT.
Any recommendations or ways to proceed?
Yeah, the other thing I would mention is, they want assistance with the QZAB.
That's correct.
And... That part out, they want to ever do that as well.
As, as part of working with the county anyway, we're going to go ahead and we're going to work with the county on the QZAB. Um, I don't know what the final maturity of the QZAB is going to be. They've gone back and forth, some are 13 years, some are 14 years, some are 15 years. Assuming a 14-year, uh, repayment on 1.5 million dollars, it's about 170,000 dollars per year. And, uh, I believe your, I believe your gymnasium is actually more... Should be more dependent.
You're going to work on those details, but I'm not going to talk to you about that. Actually, we'll get a chance to go to LGC if they were...
Yeah, we'll take both issues of February.
We gotta have money for Bill to get paid. They haven't had a chance to meet Bill for Gilroy, but I feel...
If you don't know Bill for Gilroy, you'll get a chance to meet him if you go to law.
He's always worked well with us, would be anyway, but I'm working on...
We've had, we've had several occasions.
Several occasions, yeah.
Now, I don't believe that you'll be required to meet with Bill on the refunding. If the new money goes, um, through the QZAB, there's a possibility...
Well, we talked to him, I think, that he didn't have to say we had to, that they had to approve it. We don't necessarily have to meet with him, we can talk to him on the phone, but I don't, I think that they, LGC's still got to sign off on it.
That's correct. And, and just in, in the spirit of total openness, if you do afford and the refunding completely moves away, uh, we would not meet with the rating agencies until likely, uh, the second, the third week in the month of, uh, January. So we have a pretty good deal idea at that point in time. Uh, the fees that would be paid out of pocket already would likely be, uh, the fee to the LGC, which would be 12,500 dollars. Uh, that would, that approval that the LGC would give the county would be good for at least another 12 months after that. So it would give the, the county time to come back if the market got better, if you had already gone through the rating agency process. Those ratings are good for, depending on the rating agency, between three and six months.
Gentlemen, we, we represent citizens of Macon County, and I don't think any citizen out there would object to us saving the county somewhere between 800,000 and 2 million dollars.
I typically don't find many boards that, that would answer that.
That would object, or any citizen would object to that, so I would like to commend Lori on her work with this, Jack, and certainly, uh, Chris for the work, and I would, uh, I would be in favor of us proceeding with it, if, if the more so desire.
Well, you asked in front of us. What are you, what, what can you do?
What do you need to say?
We need, of course, your approval to move forward with the process and approval to, uh, approve the contract with First Try Advisors, because that's kind of our initial step to, to get all the other players rolling.
Right, you bet. We have a motion, my commission to governor say, my tape. Proceed. Any discussion on the motion?
Chris, we can thank you enough for having me for the QZAB. I mean, that's, that's a, that's a part, too, that we found, uh, I guess, within the first, when the manager got...
Well, actually, then you were doing the QZAB. We finished it up when I came here on the renovation of the school, and we, and then we did the, the regular bank financing on the, on the addition, and then the five-sixtees school.
There was a couple of us, I was the only one that's here now, then. And, uh, of course, it's gotten much easier, I think, but at that time, it was, it was a, uh, herden cats' fee.
Sure.
So we appreciate, uh, if you know how to do that, it'd be a lot of help, Lori, to save us a lot of time. So that basically saved us, we appreciate you offering to do that.
Absolutely, and, uh, you know, I, I work with, uh, quite a few people. This is actually going to be my second time working with Mr. Horton, and we've, we've last worked together when you were at, uh, Haines County, I mean.
Also, yeah, they will. We met and talked when I was a college guy, I don't know what your ex got to do.
Um, and so I've worked with, uh, you know, a few different municipalities, and like I said, a vast majority of them typically like to move forward with refundings as quick as can be. That being said, um, I, we will be putting out a timetable in which to move forward. Uh, we will be actually needing to have a call as early as next Monday, uh, just so it may, may well bear. Uh, and this will be a rather quick, uh, transaction to be able to turn around. Obviously, we have to move out two different colonies to move forward.
Tell you another thing I'd say, Mr. Chairman, if I may, that Terry Bell was here with the QZAB and, and the expansion of these franklin schools and the five-sixtees school, and I would like to keep him on to help finish up each other's projects if he pulls aside.
Another no franklin.
We have motion to second to proceed with this, uh, project.
And then to approve contract with, uh, in the group, I'm sure, Alexander.
Any, any other discussion? Here you're not all in favor, signify by the same guy. Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chris, for your time. Lori?
Thank you, Chris.
We don't need a motion on Mr. Bell, we just kind of...
No, unless, unless there's some objection to him, uh, we'd like to...
We'd keep him off the street.
Well, it sounds like this does flip, which I think...
We'd keep him off the street.
He'd be working on...
And we would like to lock Lori into a long term.
You just take a little money, I learned it.
Well, now we'll just take what you know is coming out.
Chris can take, she's pretty good negotiator, I will take her with me next time I buy a car.
She did with my mom quite a little bit, so...
But, you know, it is very common that actually we work with clients, either on one or two different transactions, on a transactional basis or on a long-term basis. Obviously, the county doesn't have, uh, a long-term need for capital outlays for a large project, so I think, uh, this is solely as a, uh, transactional basis.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the...
Okay, Jack, I believe we're going to care about item number seven, is that correct, sir?
We want agenda here.
Just, just agree.
Seven's done.
Just say yes.
I think you're on 15. Yeah, we're getting right there.
We're on eight. We're on eight. Resolution regarding turning lanes, if you want to throw a question.
Thank you.
We're jumping around a little.
Yeah.
And on that, uh, Mr. Brett, you know, we, we had a presentation here recently on a way to help solve, hopefully help solve some of the traffic congestion at the five-sixtees school on Park Chapel, on Willows Road Road. The suggestion was to make a study and recommend about state engineers that we had a, a right turn lane on Willows Road Road along to, um, um, Park Chapel Road. That would allow the traffic to continue to flow through there and prevent them from backing up like it's been in the past, and I think it'd be much safer. The state's willing to do that at their cost, and, and for them to move forward on that, Wesley Grines said, "We need a resolution to support the board account commissioner." And I put together a resolution, as you'll find in there.
He's got a resolution, he does, he's the best man, the guy I've ever seen in my life.
And so I asked, I ran it by Mr. Grines, said, "Make sure it's okay with, with him," and he, he emailed me back and said, "That was perfect, just if y'all approve that, then we'll proceed with the, uh, working on getting that project put in place."
He has one word of caution on this project, one word of caution. Wesley and I and Joel Central, Mid-Atlantic, look, uh, the sewer line is really, really close. They are aware of that situation.
Well, actually, there's a big manhole right there with turn lanes.
And it's, uh, so they, uh, Mr. Gray, but I, I think, as long as they're aware, Mr. Manager, they're aware, we're aware, uh, as long as, when they, well, there was a track hole, somebody else needs to be aware, right, Terry?
Yeah, that, that sewer line is just, just below break, and, and so, you know, my, my fear the whole time is that when they stick a, a gray machine on that, they're going to get sewer lines.
Well, they're going to, they're going to, they're going to work around that, because Well, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna work around that because that, that is at, at the minimum grade in order to make that whole system work.
Mr. Manager, I would definitely recommend that when that time happens, and Wes has talked about it, and Wes has talked about it, and Joel Senter, that, that, uh, Mr. Bell be involved and present. If he's, if he's not related to somebody that knows for that thing, it's not me, it's that area, somebody needs to be there outside of that, because it is, it's, you can do it. I mean, you could do it, but it's, uh, a misliktar, and it's a big deal.
Well, you knock that, that, that connection right there from sewer line supplies the connection that goes under the road across the river, uh, for both the middle school and the five, six school. So if that's knocked out of commission, this school's out for both those schools.
But with that, with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution supporting the, uh, intersection modifications at the intersection of Wells Brook Road and Park Chapel Road. Uh, that, uh, we keep a pride of the state, we keep a surprise of all construction dates and times that are there. That's the motion.
We have motion and a second and discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, that motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Manager. The next item is the, uh, I believe it's Nana Hala School window replacement project and corresponding budget amendment.
Mr. Chairman, if y'all recall, the budget was thirty-five thousand dollars to go with nineteen thousand dollars. That, uh, was in the, was left over from the, uh, Nana Hala school project, QSAF project up there, uh, which is a total of seventy-two thousand dollars. Uh, after going out before bids, Mr. Bell went out for bids on the replacement of those windows, so we thought that seventy-two was gonna do it. Uh, after going to the competitive bids, it turns out the lowest responsible bidder is for eighty thousand dollars, so we're eight thousand dollars short, uh, in order to award a contract to have those windows replaced. This was, and Terry can comment on this if you'd like to, about what this means for the entire school as far as replacing of all those windows. If you'd like to.
Tell me about how, how it starts twenty twenty, Terry.
Well, in, in the original renovation of Nana Hala School, they came in with a budget, so we had to find ways to trim the budget and make it fit. And so the first thing that, one big thing on there was the, was the windows. So we eliminated the window replacement in Nana Hala, uh, to get that in, in budget, and, uh, it wasn't the best thing to do, but it was all we could do to work the money we had in time. This, this eighty thousand dollars will replace all of the windows at Nana Hala with the exception of the administration and media center addition of twelve in nineteen ninety-eight, sometimes, I don't know. Well, and so the, uh, the three prices you have, I'm not sure if you're.
Silver glass, blue brick glass, and gray glass shop.
Uh, silver glasses is the apparent low there, and, uh, we did use the specifications that were in the original document for the Nana Hala renovation. Those are the specs that we used for this window. In fact, uh, silver glasses, which was the apparent low bidder on this job, did the windows at Iowa School, they did the ones at Mountain View School. And so I, I could say that. Yeah, they're a good, good view, and those windows will meet specs if we put out.
And just to clarify what, Terry, at that time, and I think Mr. Andrew agreed that we had done, started down the road with this renovation of the QSAF money, and, and we'd already, and there were some extra costs came in, some engineering and some other costs we hadn't anticipated. So instead of going back and re-licking a tack again, uh, that's where the, that's where the cuts came in. So, uh, we was in agreement that we would come back at a later time and try to fund this. Uh, I don't know how long, Terry, it would, it would take to get the total of eighty thousand back in, uh, in energy costs, but it would basically, it wouldn't be a great.
Right, it was, some of the windows at Nana Hala School have deteriorated to the point where they are really, uh, not doing much as far as the energy penetration. Uh, things like you'll find with your Highlands.
They're like holding the lane.
Uh, Highlands, same way, so those windows are, it's that shape.
So with that, Mr. Uh, Mr. Chairman, as we is on to the school board, uh, do, I would like to make a motion that we approve, uh, the budget amendment and take that in contingency, uh, for the amount of eight thousand dollars. And allow the county manager and county attorney to go ahead and, uh, do whatever process they need to, to replace these windows in Nana Hala.
Do we have a second, one moment, one thing we'd like to do with about the, about the clarification here is to make the budget adjustment from an agency of eight thousand dollars to set up, as the commission bill says, eighty thousand dollars to pay for that. And then the second, um, you can make a second, second motion if you want to, just to award a contract for silver glass for eight thousand dollars.
Can I just include that all in one motion? I, I think if you're prepared to vote on it.
I think that's. I'll include that, with the silver glass being the low bidder, uh, be a part of that motion, they'd be awarded the contract.
What do you say to that? We have motion and a second, any discussion of the motion?
I've got a question, I'm gonna answer on this right here. This, you know, breathe for this right here, let's go a little bit. I'm gonna get a look in that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, this, 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 a few things as long as appropriate, Terry, we're coming back to cover. Well, the last six years, I mean.
Have it, Terry?
I suppose that's the question.
This was made, this was made paid for by the county, not for the schools. The, the, the schools, Nana Hala Schools have been transferred to the county, county attorney leased it back to the school board, but the county will be writing the checks and paying contracts for this.
Clarify, will we own this?
Yes, and we'll all be left with the county, right? We'll be right.
In the past, in the past, maybe some time back years ago, the process was probably a little different, and that the money was appropriated and given to the school to probably do some of this work if you were on the school board, and I would just operate over this, change a little bit in the next year.
For, 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 basically, as you said, you went into, uh, the, uh, item number five, realignment, make capital outlay program, that didn't used to occur, did it? And commissioners never did go back, that's some of the things we're referring to right now, and you as commissioner, as a, as a group commissioner, you're now looking at, pretty much controlling that capital outlay.
Thank you, Charlie Lynn.
All right, any discussion to the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify the same eye.
Aha.
Opposed, that motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Mr. Manager. Uh, item number ten has been deleted through suggestion of our attorney. Moving to item number eleven, supplemental lease agreement with the USDA, uh, Mr. Terry.
Yes, uh, supplemental lease agreement was provided to, uh, county manager from the United States of America for the USDA to utilize the county's property, uh, at Thomas Heights Road, one eighty-nine Thomas Heights Road. This has been, uh, leased by USDA Service Center for some time, they're asking for a five-year renewal. The annual rent would be ninety-nine hundred twenty dollars a year, works out eight twenty-six, sixty-six a month. They have sent the proposed document, there was one minor error in it, uh, accidentally referred to our county as Surrey County in one place. Why, we did send.
That would be potentially, you don't think.
My opinion, my opinion.
Just to give you a little bit of background on that, they, they actually had sent that to us last spring, and I think I may have discussed it with the board somewhat, about writing up the rate, the rate of five dollars per square foot has been the same for quite some time. Did negotiate, tried to negotiate with USDA, the rate's the rate, and the response we, we've got is, well, if we can't get it for this, we'll have to relocate the offices. So, big problem with that is we lose a resource for our farmers here, and so, uh, it's probably better. You know, corporate extension is okay, but it'll be for us, but these federal offices, uh, that the farmers depend on, they'd have to go to another county in order to get the services that they get now. And so we're not making a great deal of money off of that, but it's providing a good service for the farming community here and making a kind of.
Mr. Chairman, you'll note I gave you three copies, the USDA requires execution of reach of the board approval. In addition, there's a registration requirement online in order for the county to get paid. Jack has that information, you have to actually go online and provide certain information. Let's begin to.
You can pay the lease to county or.
And incidentally, that.
After that, it all up.
That requirement requires the county to update that information every year. Right now, we've got, I think, Evans Southern and, uh, we've got a few boats, but no longer. BP.
Okay, we have a motion to approve that, certainly. Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the lease as presented, as corrected by our, our county attorney. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify the same eye.
Aha.
Opposed, that motion passes. Thank you, sir. Uh, we've already taken care of item number twelve, if I'm not mistaken.
Twelve.
Twelve we deleted.
And handled thirteen.
And we handled thirteen, correct. Uh, Jack, Colosseum.
Colosseum, um, I, I can't tell you a lot about it, except that if you're familiar with the Colosseum, park down close to Fox, Fox Ridge, uh, House of Row, uh, that park is used as part of our recreation facility in the county. There's a couple of people I'm aware of, and I'm sure some of you are. We found out here the last couple of years that the, uh, reveries of the road, that may be bad down there, and, uh, we even had, uh, folks from, uh, not only our soil conservation people here, we even had people from the Eastern Baptist Charity over here looking at it, and coming up with ideas on how to stabilize that because there was even a way at the bank, and, uh, some folks felt that maybe wash away our bad season down there. But the big, the big concern is it's gonna eat out, cook up property, continue with policy. In order to do that, you need some string bank stabilization, which is expertise that we have our soil conservation service for, Mike Breelov and, uh, and Doug Johnson, uh, handle that program. One of the things I think they have to do is they have to get, uh, a, uh, a lake services agreement with good power because they control that area down there. And so it may cost some money upfront, about two thousand dollars to get those permits from them, but, uh, we understand that Mr. Breelov says that he thinks they can probably go ahead and get a grant to cook, cover their costs. But in the meantime, in order to get the project underway, and get that string bank saved as much as possible as soon as possible, uh, we need authorization to go ahead and up front, uh, maybe two thousand.
And I think I say, Mr. Manager, that we have moved it with those folks handling the business with four thousand dollars, uh, to new power. And, uh, with the help of, of, uh, of support from New Power and some calls were made, that got reduced to two thousand. So, uh, but to go ahead and let them execute the money that, that grant and let them, uh, you can't just start on this too soon, you have to play the house over.
But just, just, just to put Colosseum Park in perspective, there's an awful lot of soccer played there by an awful lot of people, and here's the only practice facility in the community of the park, and that's where they all practice. They're not allowed to practice in our fields because we've got some praxons everywhere, and they can't practice on the game field. So the only place they have to practice is Colosseum Park, so it's not just a nice thing, it's an integral part of the recreation complex, and it is heavily used.
And if you walk that side of that river, of course, out, we got these bracing beams, and it's not, uh, we just don't have no play batteries in the river.
They're gonna do a little bit of that, maybe, or something.
That's right, the, the plans, that's exactly what we want to do. And, uh, so, uh, with that, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and authorize the county manager to execute the, uh, soil and water conservation, uh, that we go ahead and, and finance the two thousand dollars, uh, out of contingency. And, uh, give the county manager permission to go ahead and execute this with the, with the soil and water extension, so that we can go ahead and get the grant running and, and get this project started.
We have motion and a second. Motion, uh, Bill, Mr. Tate, I'm sorry, Tate, a second, uh, any discussion regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify the same eye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, Mr. Tate, Mr. Young, the junior, he has an item, uh, that has been brought to his kitchen regarding Southmaking Elementary.
Let me just say real quick, this has brought my attention, I'm already back in September. I can say this for one more week, but I'm still doing it on board, so I don't always. That lets me do it after a while. Can't use this excuse anymore, but, um, I don't think I followed the appropriate channel, I was trying to help, uh, PTO push this through. The gist of this is, is that, um, uh, Southmaking Elementary is a bus hub, so students are brought in by some buses, they drop off there, they stand and wait until the next bus pulls up. Then they get on the buses and they pull out to the next school. Uh, there's evidently, uh, not enough sidewalk space to handle the quantity of students there, so they either stand in the road when it's raining, or they can stand in the grass, uh, when it's not raining. Southmaking PTO, uh, has offered to fund this entire project, but it's not necessarily just for Southmaking, it's for all the schools in general, so I thought I'd try to get a back four and try and help out, uh, with giving them some money on this. So I think this was sent after November, September, to the, uh, Board of Education, uh, that's where I moved, I should have sent it to liaison, I think, my father did on that. Uh, but the Board of Education approved it, uh, they just don't want to give them money for it, so. Well, then, then I have you, I have one, but that's right. Uh, it looks like they've taken two bids on it, the lowest bid is forty-five, twenty-three, sixty, I, I would like to see is how, get fifty percent of that, it's, uh, okay with y'all, and if y'all think there's another way we can go about this.
What, what was that, man?
Player, he's gonna do it. It's, uh, twenty-two hundred sixty-one dollars and eight cents. Again, I'm not, I thought it was probably on the appropriate channels, but I just want to make sure y'all are all in agreement with it, and we intend to develop some more activity. I don't have to follow that, so I'm looking at y'all's thoughts on this one.
Well, at, so the rest of, you know, Mr. Tate and I talked about this privately between the two of us, and I shared with him that, uh, in the past, and things that happened, that Mr. Bill can, can verify this, when folks have been interested in raising money for, have taken a project in school, uh, have come directly to the county commissioners, I think bypassing a couple of important steps, uh, that being possibly going through the liaison, which is two members of each board, which can talk about that, and then bypassing the school board. And I think the school board has had legitimately some questions about that. Here you are funding a capital project, and we don't know nothing about it, I, I go back, I think it was, but that picture question came up during some dugouts that were done, that make bits of, I'm not sure what happened. So I shared that with Mr. Tate, it actually, he actually went, it's actually gone a step beyond that, did skip the liaison, uh, level, but it was, he did go to the school board for their, I guess, staff approval, saying that it was a worthy project, and they deemed that worthy of expenditure. So while I would agree with Mr. Tate, he just wasn't familiar with the process, I think we all understand that, uh, that, that probably shouldn't go to liaison first. I don't, I don't think there's any part to it, I'm just with myself, building two, two liaisons, uh, but the school board, who are, who are elected by the people, did, did approve this as a worthy project, I think I'm standing there right, I, I would, uh, I would voice my support of that, uh, with maybe a big.
Don't have a big problem, it's just that, uh, there's other schools that need things, but, and you're gonna see those folks, uh, do the same thing, and they're gonna come, and it could be more money, but I think we still have that school too, Norm.
Yeah, uh, I, I think the, I don't know, like somebody mentioned, Board of Education doesn't have any problem with, uh, with, with projects, and I think the, the committee, the PTO did talk to the school board, and I was at the meeting, I'm not sure if anybody else was there, Terry, if you're there. But, uh, they, they asked, they asked for it, and I think they, they asked for it, maybe, you know, can you help the project, or is this a good project, we don't have any money. Well, it's true. Uh, and so, as a worthy project, I think, is, is something that is just fine, we need it, and the only concern that Mr. Tate and I talked about this is we'll make sure that all the players are, are on board, because if we're not careful to go through the liaison and make sure we're all on the same page, you could get, uh, requests from different schools for different things that, uh, PTOs and so forth think that are, and that may be necessary. But, uh, I just want to make sure that we didn't, we didn't cut out the, uh, the other people who are responsible for operating these facilities.
And I agree, Todd.
And he's done that before, and I don't have a problem with that, I just want to make sure we don't leave anybody out, and Mr. Tate's well aware of that, and, and it's a good project, and like you said, it's not just for the one school, it's for, for other people out there, and I just want to make sure that the school board doesn't have any.
And this is a safety issue.
It is, and if you've ever seen the school, I mean, welcome to Macon County. Almost every school, you know, there's a lot of schools that are huffed, not all schools are huffed, but there's a lot of schools that are huffed, uh, and I think you do need a place for your stadium, you do need a place for your gathering, it is a safety issue. And I think what gives us, I think if this was just a project for Southmaking School, then I think it would be up to the school board to, to perhaps include that sometime down streaming capital outlet. But because this is a county-wide issue, and it really is, you're affected, I guarantee you there's high school kids, there's middle school kids, and the I kids that are waiting to change buses at Southmaking.
Correct.
Uh, it, it is a county-wide thing, it does transcend the Southmaking PTO, and I'm glad that they're willing to build apps, and I think that's probably about right. But it is, it is a safety issue, I mean, let's call it what it is. It is a safety issue.
Whether we decide, whether we is, or we decide to get involved or not.
But this is really sort of similar to the project we did early on, like two thousand eight, just getting the Macon DOT to do that, and they refused any money, good school, and having money, county actually did that. Uh, because it was a safety issue as well, and, uh, in, in that regard, I think that's a lot, uh, a lot of people there. I think it's commendable, I just, I think it's commendable that the PTO are willing to go out and raise money to help meet a need. There are other schools that are doing that, I could name some, tonight that are out raising money for various things, and, um, there may be, there may be portions that can raise enough money, not, not to ask for any additional help.
No, no.
Some of them will be, maybe asking you to, 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 some of the other bodies. But, uh, it, it is, it is a, a, a safety issue, I think that's a, that's, that's, right.
Yeah, my intent is to be, uh, exactly the same, just to help out with the safety issue, and to help out in general, just get the stuff. issue and to help out in general, just get the stuff.
And that's fine, you, you, that's been clear, the two liaisons here, the school board, obviously the two liaison are on that board, we've already signed up on this, so it, to me, it's no problem, they move forward. So that a motion to stay out on board. We have a motion and a second. In discussion on the motion.
We're gonna nail that for the record, 2,0262. We don't do cents on that to the minutes, so.
Twenty cents.
Thank you, that's 10%. 10%, it's gonna be 50% or, or that amount. That amount.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify the saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioner Tate, for your work on that.
Thank y'all, thank y'all.
Uh, that was the last item, unless I missed something, Mr. Man, that's the last item I had to break apart the agenda.
Uh, that's all we had, I don't have anything else.
Okay. We have the consent agenda on that, uh, you received the minutes of the October 9th and October 11th, uh, meetings, uh, do we have the November?
I just can't find them.
This, this is a continuation of your...
Correct, so we would have had the, the budget amendments 58 through, uh, 63.
And 70.
And 70, thank you. And, uh, tax releases monthly after the law and tax report is always in that jack.
Yeah, but, and those tax releases were corrections for third layers.
So do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify the saying aye. Opposed? That motion passes. Uh, item number 15, we have some appointments that are due, uh, let's see, let's show, pass this myself.
Review officer is the first.
Jack, you want to address that?
Yeah, we, when, when people bring maps, it's sort of what they have to do, you have to prove these in our tax and GIS office, we have Mike, Mike Hall is now working in this area, replaces, uh, for a venture, and also we had, uh, another fellow that worked there who took another job, Josh, uh, Josh Pope, and, and before he left, the board had appointed him as a map review officer, map review officer. It has to be somebody actually designated by the board in order to have the guardage sign off on those. Or just asking for Mike Hall to be given out of guardage like Josh Pope have, had to put it up.
Okay. We need a motion to approve Mike Hall as a review officer. Second, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify the saying aye. Opposed? That motion passes. We do have one seat on the planning board that is, uh, that is the seat presently held by Mr. Larry Stinger. Uh, Mr. Stinger wrote a very nice letter, uh, he said his last term on the planning board ends, uh, November 2012, which is now, he said he does not wish to be considered. Past 10 years have flown by quickly while I served on the board, I wish to thank Macon County leadership, allowed me to be a part of the process. I turn 72 this month and it's time to retire. Many of the volunteer functions that I have been privileged to serve on and beginning joy, more time with my family. I do so with my best wishes to all, with all regards, I remain Larry Stinger. And I've talked to Larry about this person, I know some of you guys have, uh, he's not mad at anybody or anything else, he's just, he's been on there for 10 years. Thank you, Macon.
He's done a wonderful job, not only on the planning board, but, uh, I am so proud of his leadership in this county and, uh, he's to be praised.
So our, uh, our commendation goes to Mr. Stinger with appreciation, this board, Ms. Gillespie, would you like to address that? Ms. Gillespie is chairman of our planning board.
Nothing, no, no, then, then, then.
What you've already said, I think Mr. Stinger's brought a lot of, a lot of knowledge to that board, uh, he just, he's served place, went for several years, and, uh, he's been, he's been very valuable.
Okay, thank you, Carl. Uh, with that said, gentlemen, uh, we've pointed out to you that we have had nine, Mr. Man, you're correct if I'm wrong, we've had nine.
Eight.
Oh, unfortunately, correct.
Passed away, bro.
That is correct. Sorry about that. Uh, we, we have eight, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. You have eight folks that have applied for, uh, the appointments to the planning board. Uh, we do have, as part of your packet, I trust everybody received that, uh, you have a copy of their applications, uh, their educational background, experiences, expertise, et cetera, et cetera. And with, uh, with that said, uh, the floor is open for discussion, or a motion to approve one of these individuals would be in order. Any discussion of our agenda?
Well, since I'm, I'm just gonna remind the board that, um, there's, there's an individual up there that almost certainly would have been returned to the board, but in an effort to maintain balance on the board, the last time we appointed two people, this individual willingly stepped aside. First I'm talking about is Mark West. Can't make promises, there were no promises made, but it seems to me, uh, that in order to continue to keep that balance on the board and recognition of the fact that quite honestly, he helped this board out of what would have been a very typical situation, uh, I would, you know, think that he should be considered for, for that position. Not saying anything negative against any of the other candidates, suffice to say that I, I think Mark would have been, had he, had he maintained his name in the, in the hopper the last time we did this, I think almost certainly he would have been returned to the board. Uh, I, I think it would be the correct thing for this board to do, I'm not the only one who has the opinion, but in my opinion, it would be the correct thing to do, to be returned to the board. That's just...
Is that a motion? It certainly can be. We have a motion by Commissioner Coppers, second by Commissioner Haven, uh, for Mark West, uh, to be added to the planning board. Commissioner Gillespie, I wouldn't put you on the spot to recommend one of these, you don't need to do that, not at your place, but you, you have the objections to Mr. West.
Absolutely not, I think Mr. West would be a viable asset to the planning board.
Any other discussion regarding the motion?
That's a lame duck, it's getting closer.
Uh, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify the saying aye. Opposed? That motion passes unanimously, Mark West has rejoined your board. Carl, you inform him of that, Mr. Man.
We'll send a notice, a thank you notice for his state.
Tell him he can blame it on me if he's got something. Just give me a call, I'm the only one that will.
We have the, uh, last item is the Highlands Tourism Development Commission, there are three seats available. Uh, we do have a letter from the executive director of the Highlands Area Chamber of Commerce, is that right, Jim? And this letter was written to Commissioner Tate, and Jim, if you want to address that, I defer to you.
I think they have three appointments, uh...
Correct.
Gary Drake, Jerry Ward, and then Sullivan, they've all called, and they've, uh, agreed to, uh, put two new ones on them, and return them, Gary Drake, I think you know, uh, no Gary, he's a valid town commissioner, uh, Bill Futral, actually sits on the planning board, and, uh, Jack Austin, I don't know if there's any, but, uh, I have no problems with these three on. If it's, I sit on this board, but if it's okay, I'm running a motion, but I guess that I hope so.
Jim, does that also include Chris Alley in that same motion?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
With a small commendation, represent.
Right, and that's, uh, that's a part of the board's participation, chairman.
That's right, that's correct, thank you. Okay, recommendation of Mr. Tate and motion by Commissioner Tate for those people to be appointed, as he stated, in the web second, that motion? Motion as a second by Commissioner Coppers, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify the saying aye. Opposed? That motion passes. That would be under appointment.
Who was the OI representative?
Me.
Who was the OI representative?
Sorry, I forgot.
Uh, that was Jack Austin.
That Laura Denton.
Yes, Gary, Gary Drake, Bill Futral, and Jack Austin.
They have, uh, certain representatives from...
I just couldn't remember, I just couldn't hear it.
Uh, Mr. Attorney, do you need a close session?
The attorney and I have some information for the board, but that was as far as, during my privilege, and for that in mind, I would ask the board consideration for a close session, perhaps not very long, but we need to present something that draws attention in, uh, eastern direction, and then...
My attorney, Washington, bring this.
Before any, any action, this, this man, this man.
I don't, I don't need to say any reaction.
This is informational for the board, okay?
Just one item before we, this, before we go into a session. Our next meeting is December 3rd.
The, the state law requires, and even number here, that all, uh, members selected for the county commissioners be sworn in first Monday in December, which is December the 3rd, and, uh, all, Mr. Coppers is still a county commissioner, he'll be December the 3rd. We have three, uh, three people to be sworn in. It also requires that at that first meeting, that the board select from among its members, a chair and a vice chair, uh, to serve the board of counties, they don't have a chairman that's selected secondly for the rest of the board members, so, uh, what we would have this way doing, is agreeable with the board, is to go ahead and have a special call meeting on, uh, Tuesday, or actually it's Monday, Monday, uh, December the 3rd, at, uh, is there a time? Is there a cabinet, any time all that day? You can do it, you can do it in the morning, in the afternoon, in the evening, whatever is going to be in the board, but it needs to be on the first Monday.
Yeah, are you going to transact any business during that meeting?
We need to...
Well, the new chairman might want to transact, so.
You, you anticipate we need to have meetings?
I think to the extent, did you have any desire to transact business other than what's been enumerated by the county manager, you're gonna need to get that to him, that will have to be included in the notice because it is a special call meeting.
Well, here, here's the other question, do, we, we would anticipate having that meeting and also having a meeting on the 11th, is that what you?
That is correct.
You don't think we can not have that meeting?
It will not be in lieu of.
I'm in the same position, by the way, I let me say this, our chairman representative is very well in Raleigh, with the Goals Committee, uh, Kevin, keep watching, he's done a good job, and, and they have, they have narrowed it down to a lot of goals, to about 58, with the 900 demo again on the 12, uh, starting at 8 o'clock come the 12th, I figured I was asking about the 11, uh, in Raleigh, so, but, uh, Chairman Corbin, thank you, you did a great job on the West State Goals, and, uh, looking at the seat book, uh, and the schedule, he, he was on the West. Was a way, way west, and he participated, like I said, go, so I asked Kevin to serve on that, and he was kind enough to take it, he made it, won one, and, uh, by the way, that is the first time, uh, I, I served on it, but I was on the executive committee, but that's the first time that we've had a legislative goal that, that I know of. Do you tell me? Okay. Get me here, let me check.
But, but, but we've had, we've, we've only had two people from the West to serve on this, and honorize the memory of their vote.
Yeah, and let me, let me say this, a couple of things that, to clarify what that is, uh, and then we'll, we'll move on. Let's let the Goals Committee, I believe, Ronnie, I'm correct, there's about 18 county commissioners, is that right? There's a point for that. There's 18 county commissioners out of 550, so it's a small group, plus the staff for the North County Association of County Commissioners, so it's a small group, but I lobbied very hard for a couple of things. One, there's a lot of control of our calendar, school calendar, that passed, and, and that wound up being one of the things that we passed on to the, to the executive committee. So, uh, that, that's gonna happen, it looks like, and we're gonna push that through the legislature, so that, that means we will be able to decide when we want to start school, and I think that makes a whole lot of sense, and I argued that for the West, and that was successful. The other thing that, that we were successful in arguing was about the, uh, the video gaming machines and, uh, to encourage the legislature to pass some type of legislation regarding that, uh, whether it be fee-based or whatever, we didn't get, that did pass the body, and that was passed on, so that's been all probably going to make it. Probably the larger issue was that we were gonna suggest that, uh, if the legislature makes cuts, we asked them not to pass on, send mandates to the county...
As they have been doing regulations, so.
No, please, thank you. Well, that's a fact, that ain't good for places. So that's, it was a wonderful experience, and I was happy to, it was two days, took two days, uh, last week, and it was, uh, green, and I appreciate that.
Not all months on advantage, the more there are agreements.
Partnership, partnerships, yeah.
I'd say partnerships, very well.
We asked them for no more partnerships, required us to be...
And then those 58 that Kelly worked on, probably pared down, they'll probably, we'd go from 58 to 25 to 12, we'd probably end up with about six, I would say, but we'll read, and, uh...
And let me mention this too, Ronnie, I've got the dates, uh, January the 23rd and 24th, uh, are the legislative Goals meeting that all of us, we all will go to in Raleigh, and I'm not sure the location of that.
It'll be at Corvus Center.
At Corvus Center, and, and that's where we met before. So, uh, put that on your calendar, January 23rd and 24th, uh, whoever can will need to go to Raleigh to be a part of that, that will be for the final passage of our legislative Goals, and Ronnie said that, and then it'll probably be five or six, uh, Goals, so.
There's also a January, the school and county commissioners, and I think, uh, most everybody's signed up for that.
It's on Ashville.
It's on Ashville, so we'll, we'll arrange for that. We'll get back to the, the December 3rd meeting, the general statutes will vary to have a meeting for the board, we'll be trying to square the measures, uh, and to elect chair and vice chair, anything beyond that, and then we usually have a reception or something like that, who's, uh, recognized, the members and so forth, members being related or whatever, and, uh, we haven't traditionally had a lot of in, information, a lot of action on that agenda, but that could change if y'all decide you want to, you want to do that, but your regular reading schedule calls for the second, two, two each month, which is, say, December the 11th. Now, if you wanted to conduct a lot of business on December the 3rd and then beat, as the county attorney would say, beat, open, and, and reset or adjourn, uh, you could, if you want to do that.
I think with this bond thing, I think you're gonna have to...
There's gonna be some work. We need to be on the level.
Uh, if, if there's anything in particular you want to add to that special call meeting on December the 3rd, I may need to add that to it.
We want two bonds, but, uh...
And we'll prove the bonds for, for everybody, so, uh, on, on the 3rd, and...
For the new commissioners.
For the new commissioners. Obviously, we'll be swearing in, swearing in, electing chair and vice chair for the bonds, those are basically things that you're pretty happy to require by law.
You can set the names and calendar.
You can, or you can wait until your regular meeting on the 11th, and I think the chairman, whoever the chairman is after the December 3rd meeting, uh, will have the possibility of, uh, re-allocating, uh, positions, uh, for service if there changes on the board, different committees need, and so forth, and perhaps you have some time between the 3rd and 11th, but go ahead, contact everybody and see how you want to do that. So unless there's some change, we'll go ahead and use that as a public notice, then for December 3rd, unless I'm here for the sheriff's office.
Okay. We have a motion to go into a close session for attorney-client privileges requested by our attorney and county manager.
Can you guys say the time for December 3rd, just then?
December 3rd at 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM. Right here.
School board squares and their new members, I, they don't, I don't...
At 6:00 PM?
I'm pretty sure, their meeting is the same time, but...
It's no big deal, we did say it.
I don't, I'm not sure, they haven't said theirs, this, like, for sure yet, so, I mean, I haven't, like, they haven't, I haven't seen theirs yet, but I'm assuming, they don't have a special call meetings, I'm assuming at 6, which is when their meetings normally are.
Does it matter, Chester, if we do that?
You said it any time.
They might, they're in the middle of it, I, I don't know about yet.
They do, you can, you know.
Yeah, I don't, they haven't given us when they're doing it yet.
I said you have to tell them out of town, I'm out of town next day.
It's okay, just, it's okay.
Let's kind of throw a throw all of this, that may, sure.
I'll be here Thursday, I'll be here, you live at 6, bitch.
I'll be here by 6. Okay, it's the 6 o'clock, school will change everything, I think.
It's 6:30, for your first.
All in favor of going into a close session, say aye. Opposed?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Carl, thank you for coming by.
Thank you, Carl, happy Thanksgiving. Colin, so happy Thanksgiving, just, you guys are, you guys do great work.
Oh.
Really happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
That'd be for swearing in some U.I. Hall. Swearing of some U I H. word up.
No action.
Move to adjourn.
Somebody give me a second in there.
Second? Give me a second, move to adjourn.
You got that? Motion to adjourn?
Yeah. All in favor, favor, say aye.
We got it, we're out of here.
You all move into adjourn?
Who was that saying?
You all move into adjourn?
Ron seconded, I, I made it.
No action, you didn't.
All right. Don't leave yet.